Here, announcement of the open public media law.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of open public media's law has been satisfied with respect to this being specifying the time, date, and location, including annual notice adopted reorganization meeting followed with the county clerk posting administration building mailed to two newspapers in accordance with provisions of law.
Okay, Commissioner Gallo, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please.
I shall be the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Father Patrick Bryan, would you lead it in the invocation, please?
The commissioners down here are wondering if the air is on. Is the air on?
It's getting turned off.
No second election.
God our Father bless our commissioners this day with clean hearts and inspired vision. When there is an opportunity to assist the poor, allow them to be responsive and enthusiastic in that response. May they be a people of wisdom, always faithful to your will. May they see you in all their constituents and be bearers of peace as they travel through the county of Passaic. And we pray in a special way for the continued recovery of Commissioner Duffy. Amen. He's driving his wife nuts.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died serving our United States Armed Forces and all have died from COVID-19, especially the 2,259 residents of Passaic County. Also keeping your thoughts, the passing of Cynthia Miller, the wife of Jeff Miller, who works in our buildings grounds department here at the county. Thank you. Take a motion to approve the minutes of June 13, 2023.
Move it.
Second by James, second by Cruz. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz, Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lozera.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
Approval of proclamations. Need a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Motion made by Cruz, second by James. Just real quick, Passaic County Board of County Commissioners, which is to honor and recognize Charles Morrison as he retired from the Passaic County Police Academy. We wish him well. Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lozera.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
Administrators report.
Director, yes, we have a presentation on the 519 Ringwood Avenue redevelopment affordable housing project in Pompton Lakes. I'm going to go down there and I'm going to call. So Director and Commissioners, thank you for having us. We're here to present on an exciting affordable housing project that's been under works for a long time in the borough of Pompton Lakes. With me here, I have Heather Litzbauer, the financial advisor for the Improvement Authority, Steve Coppa, who is the architect of record on the project, Janice DeJohn, who we all know is the director of our housing department, and Bill Ketchin, who is the auditor and financial advisor.
Accountant.
Accountant for the Affordable Housing Corporation. As you can see by the project team, this is really a team effort for a lot of different divisions and agencies in the county. Not only is the board involved, the housing agency, the Affordable Housing Corporation, the Improvement Authority, a number of county departments. So it really has been a team effort. I'm going to turn it over to Janice, and I should have started with this, but this is tied into the Guarantee Ordinance 2023-05 that we're asking your consideration to approve in the financing efforts of the project. So I'm going to turn it over to Janice now to go through the history and walk you through what the project is.
Yes, thank you, Matt. Next slide, Micah, please. Good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for having us here. So just to give you a little history about this project, how we all got to this place. It's been a while. It started in 2003. The county housing agency back then passed a resolution to set aside $3.3 million that they had in administrative fees for the purpose of developing affordable housing. Turns out, this was a really smart move because it safeguarded the money so HUD couldn't recapture it. Fast forward to 2011, the agency passed another resolution to again restrict their administrative fees and increase the allocation to $4.2 million. Then the housing agency voted to form a corporation, nonprofit, so they could explore the possibilities of what they could do with these funds. Hence, the nonprofit was formed. It's called the Passaic County Affordable Housing Corporation. And it wants to develop some affordable housing, of course. After the next few years, we explored some possibilities. We tried to purchase land in Halden. We tried to buy two existing senior buildings in Wayne. Unfortunately, none of those things worked out for us. After that, once the county built the county public works facility at the old Nike base on Route 23, they no longer had a need for the garage at Pompton Lakes, which is located on 519 Ringwood Ave. So as a result of all that, in December 28th in 2021, the Board of County Commissioners adopted a resolution to authorize a purchase agreement between the county and the housing corporation so that we could purchase 519 Ringwood Ave with the purpose of developing some affordable housing on the site. Next slide, please.
And if I could just jump in there and mention Pompton Lakes Mayor Michael Sarah, who has worked cooperatively with us throughout this entire project, has been a partner. We're continuing to work with him as we, you know, go through the redevelopment process and the site plan applications. And he's excited about this project. And fortuitous that we took this public works garage offline, and it's now available for this purpose, as Janice will get into, because of where it's located.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Micah. So 519 Ringwood Ave, it's really a great location for a couple of reasons. It's very accessible to public transportation, stores and restaurants. You can walk right there to them. It's outside of both the 100 and the 500-year flood zone. It's also a non-poverty area, which HUD is very receptive to when building new construction. The most current census tells us that Pompton Lakes has 11,127 residents, 15.5% of them are senior citizens, or 1,725. $2,100 is the current median rent for a one-bedroom in Pompton Lakes. It's about $200 more than the median rent for the whole county put together. So it is a more expensive town to rent in. As a matter of fact, we have 842 vouchers we administer within the county, and only 23 of them are located in Pompton Lakes right now. And we know there's a need. There is one other senior housing complex in Pompton Lakes. It has 99 units, and there's over a three-year waiting period to get into one of those apartments. So it's a great location. We have the need. It is a good spot, which is hard to find. Next slide, please. So a little about the project, which Steve will get into in a minute, about the facility. But it's going to be 51-bedroom units. They're all going to be subsidized by vouchers from the Passaic County Housing Agency. It's going to be for low and moderate income seniors with a preference for veterans and Pompton Lakes residents. So you could think of it like this. If you're a senior in the service area, you get one point. If you're a senior in Pompton Lakes, you get two points. If you're a senior in Pompton Lakes and a veteran, you'll get three points, which means you would be at the top of the list. We would serve them first. And that's how it would go. They would have, we would have a separate waiting list also for this building, separate from the Section 8 program. Steve, I'll let you explain a little more about the building.
Thank you, Janice. Matt, so as Janice and Matt have already stated, this project has been built for senior housing. It's located on the site that was a former DPW of the county. So when we finished DPW in Wayne, it was only the.
Away with Patterson, but also now with Pompton Lakes. So what's happened is, we took a look at the site and to give its maximum and best use, we configured different apartment configurations, often before the board, and this is the one they've chosen. And as Janice said, there's 51-bedroom units. There's also a community space, some office space, obviously elevators, janitors closets, and things like that to support the building. And it's a four-story wood-framed building. Parking is completely onsite, which is another positive attribute for this site because we can afford all the parking onsite. We don't have to build garages, we have elevated parking. And we have not only the parking that we need, but we provide it for also for staff. And it met Pompton Lakes' expectation for the parking. This was actually zoned and approved under this Redevelopment Act, so we actually dictated to them how we were going to build this and what we're going to build. There is waterways adjacent. They're not attractive in and of themselves, but the site is going to be improved to provide for walking paths, you know, leisurely, non or passive type of exercise that the seniors can take advantage of onsite. And it's isolated from other buildings with the exception of the one on Ringwood Avenue, so it's sort of in its own area. County's going to develop a sort of a salt area DPW aside from this, but that's on Ivy Street. It won't affect us. All of our ingress and ingress into the site exists and will remain. So we're not contributing or asking Pompton Lakes for any traffic remediation. As I said, I did the one in Pompton Lakes back in the 80s. That was a Section 8 202. This is going to be much more attractive. The committee has charged us with doing something with some aesthetic value. The 202s were, they told us what windows to use. We did the one in Pompton Lakes, and we did the one in Butler. They were the same. This is a dramatic departure. It's much, much more livable. It's a much nicer project. So it'll be commodious with the area, and it's going to be a big improvement to that site. No question about it. So that's the project, and that's how we're moving forward on it. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer for you.
Next slide, please.
So this, in my opinion, is the most important part for the board. Obviously, asking you the board to guarantee $14 million in financing is a small ask. I can give you my word that I made sure that we put a number of protections in to make sure that it was a sound investment. But there's also significant subsidies from the board to make the deal work, including American Rescue Plan funds, contributions from the homelessness trust fund, both an upfront contribution and then a yearly contribution, and deferring the sale of the property. So we won't get the lump sum upfront. We'll get it over the course of 30 years. Heather is the financial advisor for the Improvement Authority. I'm going to have her walk through the things we did and what the financing scheme looks like.
Sure. So how do we put together the financing package? The Passaic County Improvement Authority would be the issuer of the bonds. The bonds would be secured by two different avenues. The first, a loan agreement between the Improvement Authority and the housing agency, whereas all revenues that the housing agency receives will go towards payment of the debt after expenses of the project are paid. The other security is the county guarantee. The county guarantee allows the bonds to be rated AA1, which is the county's rating, and provides the lowest cost of capital in the market as compared to if the housing agency issued debt on their own. It's a much better interest rate that they would receive. The bonds will be over 30 years. And like Matt said, in order to get to a 1.2x debt service coverage ratio, which is typical for a revenue project, there are several different sources of funds besides the bonds. The housing agency, as Janice had said, that there's about $4.2 million of reserves coming into the project. Then the county funds between the homelessness trust fund, and then also the American Rescue Plans, an additional $2.1 million. And then the rest will be the bond proceeds, which right now is about $12 million, but we're asking for a $14 million not to exceed because we don't know the actual construction bids at this time to give us some room. And then, as Matt said, there's going to be a county subsidy and deficiency agreement. That's the mechanism that allows the county to put in subsidy payments from the homelessness trust and American Rescue Plan funds. And it also allows that if there's excess revenues in every year, it would go to the county to pay for the deferred land payments.
The other important thing with this agreement, too, is if everything goes wrong and our revenues don't hit, the deficiency agreement would be triggered first, and the board would have the opportunity to make sure that our guarantee isn't called, which would affect our credit rating. So there's a layer of protection between a reportable action that'll affect our credit rating. So that's just another layer of protection for the board and for the county's credit rating, which was important to all of us.
As far as the financing concern, that's a summary of that, and I can answer any questions that you may have.
Heather, before we do that, if Bill, and Bill, as the accountant of the Affordable Housing Corporation, has an expertise in affordable housing development, helped us put together all of our projections for revenues and costs. So Bill, if I could turn it over to you.
Sure. So typical with most affordable housing complexes, a pro forma was developed, the cash flow analysis, over the period of time of the financing, which forecasted revenues out at a 2% increase annually and forecasted expenditures out at a 3% projection, a safeguard for conservatism. Additionally, there's a 5% vacancy loss included in the cash flow analysis, while since the majority of the revenue will flow from the Passaic County Public Housing Agency to the Passaic County Affordable Housing Corp, that 5% is probably 80% higher than what could ever be expected because the source of funding is virtually guaranteed. The expenditures at this point are based on comparable projects, 50-unit affordable housing, three, four stories, for utilities, for insurance, for maintenance, and other areas. With those in mind, with the additional sources of funding provided from the county, as well as the $4,283, you're maintaining, as Heather mentioned, pretty close to a 1.20 debt service coverage percentage throughout the life of the debt. And the tenants, by the way, will pay only, the rents as originally stated are $2,028. Of that number, tenant share will be somewhere around in the 100 to 200 to 300 amount. The balance will be subsidies through the Passaic County Public Housing Agency. Thank you.
Thanks, Bill. So our last slide is just the timeline of where we are in the project. As Janice mentioned, the board had previously approved the purchase and sale agreement in December of 2021. On May 18th, the Pompton Lakes Redevelopment Agency approved and referred the redevelopment plan, and then it goes through a series of approvals by their planning board and Borough Council. The PCIA approved the local finance board application at their meeting last week. And then tonight, we have the introduction of the county guarantee ordinance and the approval of the amendment to the PSA, and then a series of steps that have to happen, the significant ones being demolition over the summer, advertising the project in October 2023, pricing and closing of the PCIA bonds, and then hopefully construction in November.
And if I could just jump in on the timeline, the reason why the county guarantee is happening at this time is because when you submit the local finance board application, the county guarantee is part of that. So it needs to be introduced prior to the local finance board hearing because they want to make sure the county is backing the project, and they review the guarantee and review the project as part of the application.
So I know we've thrown a lot of information at you. I don't know if there's any questions, concerns.
Regarding the rent.
Sure. Well, the tenant's responsibility per the HUD regulations is 30% of the adjusted gross income. And by virtue of the income levels for the individuals that would be eligible, the individuals as well as couples that would be eligible, the average rent is going to be three to, maybe at most 300 to 400, but more like 200 to 250.
Okay. So.
We would like to manage it with the Passaic County Affordable Housing Corporation.
Okay. So this way, I mean, I can imagine.
Oh, sorry. I can imagine. I didn't want anybody to hear me. I can imagine that this is going to be very popular. Once this thing is built, you're going to have people rushing from all sides in order to participate in this. And I'm glad there's a point system to try to reward this fairly.
And it's just like the Section 8 way that was just by date and time implications.
Yeah. So Commissioners. Just like Janice has a list for her vouchers now, there would be a list for this, and there'd be an orderly process.
Right.
So instead of using these 50 vouchers on, and correct me if I'm wrong, instead of using these 50 vouchers with a private landlord, we would use them to.
Right. Okay.
Pay back the debt.
There's obviously a huge need for this kind of development, especially the veteran component is very important. I want Passaic, everyone to know that Passaic County cares about its vets, and we're going to do everything we possibly can to establish affordable housing for them. And I'm glad to hear that we're going to manage the whole project. But I do want to ask one question. Let's assume, is there an escape clause in this? I mean, we passed a guarantee ordinance tonight, or first reading, and then we move forward after we go through everything that Matt talked about, all the checkpoints. Is there a point that possibly we can escape from the responsibility, or once you do it, you're in? Both feet.
Can you just clarify your question, sir? Are you saying like we go out to bid and it comes in way over bid? That kind of situation?
Something happens where it really doesn't coincide with the planning. And by the way, I want to thank all of you for participating. You folks did a lot of work. But let's just say something comes along that, be it the bid, the cost of concrete, whatever you want to say, really makes it almost impossible.
Maybe a huge unexpected environmental cost in connection with the site. Well, I can say we have already done remediation on the site, so we're fairly, one of the reasons why we're demolishing the building first is so that we can clear all that up. But we have done remediation that was managed by our county engineering department. So we did get an REO. I'm not overly concerned about environmental issues. But listen, there's a lot of things that need to happen between now and us putting a shovel in the ground. And any number of things could go wrong where the project didn't move forward, and we'd reevaluate based on scenarios that are presented to us.
I guess that's what I want to establish. We can reevaluate at some point if, in fact, you know, things out of our control take place that we have to either deal with or reconfigure what we're doing. That's always going to be able to be done, correct?
Yeah. As Steve and his team develop the plans more, where, you know, he's able to hone in more on the construction costs. And Steve, I don't know if you want to get into that at all. But yeah, well, things will change as the plans get developed more.
The estimate should be pessimistic at this point, but we can't guarantee it.
Right.
And certainly through the years, 47 years I've worked with this county, we've had projects that have been problematic, but we seem to find a way to work them out. I don't think the budget is bare bones, especially not with reserve regarding the construction costs. I can tell you from our experience recently that we've actually booked projects in under budget, just recently. The Biomed, for instance, that came in almost $4 million under what we anticipated. So there's a, from the estimator's standpoint, it's pessimist. It's not optimistic. They're taking into account a lot of other factors. And based on the projects that we've seen, this is commensurate in its detailing. As I said, the aesthetic value is certainly better than a Section 8 202, those things with like fill boxes. And Pompton Lakes and Butler, as you said, there were 10 applications for every, every one apartment. So I only anticipate, if we do find some things in the ground, we'll deal with it. We're not sure 100%, but we're, as Matt has said, the county's got some due diligence on the potential for contaminated soils and things like that.
This project be open to, well, Passaic County residents or just Pompton Lakes? Everything under your purview. Okay.
I can tell you, Director, we have been overly conservative with revenue projections, with building costs, hoping that things are going to come in lower.
Okay. I'm good.
I got a question, Director. And you just asked it, Janice, you answered it about it being exclusive to, I guess, the northern part of the county residence, excluding Patterson, Passaic, and Clifton, right, you said?
Yes, because that's not in our jurisdiction.
Correct.
Because they all have their own housing authority.
And having a separate preference list for veterans and seniors of Pompton Lakes, what are the other criterias?
Senior citizen.
Just.
Yes.
There's no restrictions? There's no just straight-up senior citizen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Are you moving your offices there? We may, yeah. In conversation.
There's still some moving parts, but that is on the table, yeah. So in closing, I do want to thank and recognize Janice. She's been, as you can see by the history of the project, she's been.
I wasn't here from 2003 till 2009. Just want to make that clear.
She's been carrying the water on this project since I was in high school, so thank you for that, Janice. But I also want to recognize, I mean, it really has been a team effort. Our CFO, Jonathan Perre, on the engineering end. Steve mentioned the salt dome. We are reconstructing a salt dome right next door, which we've been coordinating, and Ken Simpson's been running point on that project. The deputy administrator, Mark Seaman. It really has been all hands on decks with our variety of county departments and divisions and agencies and authorities. So that's all we have. Thank you.
Any more questions? We're good. The good presentation. Just so, I'm going to go out of order on the next order of business. I'm going to move the guarantee from the bottom of the agenda here to now, following your presentation.
Director, I just have two more minor things to report if I can.
The administrator's telling me it's still his time.
So on June 24th, the county sold 3.7 million in Chapter 12 college bonds. There were four bidders. The winning bid was made by Fidelity Capital Markets with a total interest cost of 2.62%. And they paid a premium of $204,164 for the bonds. So that is good news. Thank you, Rich, and our whole financial team for all of your work on that. And the other thing is, today we celebrated the retirement of Carmen Santana, our deputy purchasing agent. She's been with us for how many years? 39 years. So we wish Carmen well in her retirement and best wishes. That's all I have. Thank you, Director.
Okay. As I stated, thank you, Matthew, as I stated, we're going to move the ordinance, guarantee ordinance on first reading. To this point, Lou, you want to take it away?
Yes. Director, we are at M1. We are in receipt of the supplemental debt statement from the CFO. He filed that with the state. M2 guaranteed ordinance 2023-05, guaranteed ordinance of the county of Passaic, New Jersey, securing Passaic County Improvement Authorities, county of Passaic, guaranteed revenue, bonds, Veterans Housing Project, Series 2023, in one or more series, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $14 million.
I just want to remind everyone, this is on first reading, so the public portion will take place.
No, at the.
At the next meeting?
I'll move it then, Pat.
All right, moved by James.
Second.
Second by Gallo. Any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director, just for a matter of record, the public hearing for the guaranteed ordinance will be at 5:30 on July 18, 2023.
Okay. Okay.
Director, I thank you for doing that. You know, I have an appointment in Greenwood.
Yes, yes.
To get to, so I appreciate it. And by the way, thank you for the presentation. It was really good, really good presentation. A lot of work went into this to this point.
Got a good team.
Yeah, we do. We really do. So thank everybody who was part of this. It's the right thing to do. Anyway, I will see you tomorrow.
Now we'll go to the county commissioner report. I just have something real quick to talk about. Yesterday, we opened the Fairlawn Avenue Bridge between Fairlawn and Patterson there on Route 20. Existing bridge was built in 1905. It was a two-span, simply-supported Pratt Trust structure carrying two lanes of traffic. And if anybody remembers that bridge, especially if you had a motorcycle, you took your life in your hands when you're over the metal there. The bridge was classified as structurally deficient and functionally obsolete due to condition of the superstructure and the substructure and the bridge geometry. The bridge was also considered scour critical, which means that whenever you had the river running, you know, in heavy rains and stuff, it would just eat away, scour away that the side of the two banks, which made it even more seriously dangerous. Commissioner Bartlet's going to talk about the funds that we applied for through the NJTPA and NJDOT. And I'll let him take it from there, because he put a lot of work into this. So if you want to just continue that?
Thank you, Director. Thanks. Like Janice, I was not here for the beginning of this particular project. In fact, I wasn't on this board yet. And Pat, you were, even Director, you were our representative on the NJTPA board when this all sort of began with this 117-year-old bridge. But I think it's a great example of a lot of what's happening right now, which is we are realizing the fruits of time, effort and collaboration that's been put into projects like this. The Fairlawn Avenue Bridge is the current example. It opened yesterday, five months early, five months ahead of schedule, and we still have a final change order or two, but somewhere between $1 and $2 million under budget. So we had, and speaking of the budget, this is an entirely federally funded project. So through NJTPA, federal money flows into Passaic County and our region for major projects like this. It's what enables Passaic County to design and plan and construct something like this without, you know, walloping our constituents in the property taxes, the fact that we're able to draw on federal funds. And this comes through collaboration across the river with the county executive, Jim Tedesco, and the Board of County Commissioners in Bergen County, but also collaboration. And I have to say, it's genuinely bipartisan collaboration on the NJTPA board with 13 different member counties, as well as the Port Authority and NJDOT and the Governor's Office, cities of Newark and Jersey City, were able to accomplish a lot. And in fact, this bridge is, as I say, just the beginning of the piece of a lot of good news that's going to be coming in the months and years ahead. For those of you who enjoy driving on Route 46 and Route 3, I heard that, that project will be substantially complete this November, again, ahead of schedule, thanks to good work by NJDOT and the private contractor there. But that's a project that, by the time I came on that board, had already been delayed six times. My very first meeting of NJTPA as a board member, they delayed it a seventh time. And, you know, we had had enough in this region because that was an important project. And between that, which will be substantially complete in November, substantially complete means the road part is done. There may be equipment on the sides of the road over the winter. We're not going to plant anything until spring, but the, those short on and off ramps that everybody deals with and some of the other challenges of the temporary signing and the Jersey barriers are all going to be behind us by the time Thanksgiving and Christmas come this year. So that's more good news. That and Fairlawn Avenue and a whole load of other projects are just part of what we've accomplished, bringing more than half a billion dollars in new federal funding into Passaic County for projects like that over the last 11 years that I've been on that board. And there's more to come. There's the Sixth Avenue Bridge connecting Patterson to Prospect Park and Hawthorne. There's $40 million in safety improvements to county roads in Clifton, Passaic, Patterson and Wayne. There's the other projects funded by the local capital bridge development project. There's the Main Avenue Corridor in the city of Passaic, where we've got a great collaboration with New Jersey Transit, where they're, you know, creating sort of a downtown bus depot and pedestrian area. It's going to be both a safety improvement and really a quality of life and beautification improvement for downtown Passaic. So all of that's happening, and it's the realization of the fruits of work going back many years. And I guess today, despite the weather and all the umbrellas we had to hold up during our press conference, I think it was a great example of what we're accomplishing here.
Thank you. And also, I would like to acknowledge our Passaic County Engineering Department for coordinating this project with special recognition to Principal Engineer of Bridges, Ariella Mayer. We did a phenomenal job, right, Jonathan, with that? And so she deserves a good shout out for that. And she's been working on this project since its inception a decade ago. You know that these things take time, but when you've got good people running it, good things happen. So thank you, John, for your report. And I'll go next to Orlando.
Thank you, Director. I just want to also echo the sentiments and the comments of my colleague, Commissioner Bartlet, just now on the importance of this bridge and what the impact it is to the local residents and, more importantly, the local economy. As a, myself as the president of the Patterson Chamber of Commerce, this bridge opening is a huge benefit to the local businesses in that immediate area. We do get a huge influx of traffic from our neighboring counties with the fact that we're the closest, if not the only, UEZ zone in Passaic County, where they can come to places like Home Depot in our Lowes and only pay 3.5% sales tax. So it drives a huge number of individuals to come over and shop in our commercial districts. So this bridge being open and, yeah, just the economic impact is going to be great for all those surrounding businesses and vice versa, for the people from Patterson and the other local towns to go into Bergen County and patronize those businesses as well. This morning, I was in a, as a member of the Workforce Development Board, the Subcommittee in the Industry in Demand Council, we had a presentation from the New Jersey Department of Labor and Workforce, and I just wanted to share with you guys some of the staggering numbers that came before us, I think in a positive way. But in the entire Passaic County, the assessment of labor and workforce, municipalities with the most job openings in Passaic County, this data is from January 23 to just May of 23. But the town of Wayne has the most job openings at 5,500 jobs. Following them is Patterson with 4,800, Clifton 35, Passaic 1,500, Totala 900, and the rest of the municipalities right after that with a couple hundred job openings. Obviously, those industries and those numbers are related to the towns that have, obviously, St. Joe's Hospital, medical facilities, Passaic has St. Mary's, so healthcare, education, Patterson having a large job openings with the school district. So I just, I wanted to share those numbers, some of the agencies that have these large number of openings, as I said, St. Joseph's Health, Patterson Public Schools, Catholic Charities, St. Mary's, Passaic County Community College, a couple other private industries as well, Valley National Bank, Wayne having Willbrook Mall, retail job opening numbers is very large as well, that contributes to that. But I just wanted to share those numbers because, you know, it's just good to know that there is work in Passaic County. We encourage people to come, work in Passaic County, live, play, eat here. So when you hear people out there saying that they can't find work, we have data that shows that Passaic County is hiring and we encourage people to come and work here. So thank you, Director.
Thank you. Commissioner, how often are those numbers updated?
They try to do it a couple times a year. There's usually, the trend, obviously, during the holiday season, some numbers will spike with seasonal jobs. Now in the summer, you'll also see seasonal spikes with lifeguards and places like that that are hiring just summer jobs, summer camps, camp counselors. So they try to do it a couple times a year just to see the trend, eliminating some of those seasonal jobs and seeing what, you know, where the peak is. But for the most part, we get these numbers a couple times a year and it just keeps us informed, especially with our partners in specific industries like manufacturers that are constantly looking for work and help. So it's good to know that these jobs are available. And the more individuals that can come through the One Stop and Workforce Development Board and other agencies, they have this data that they can use to help place these people in work right away.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Who we got next here? Commissioner Gallo? Do you have anything?
No, Director, I have nothing this evening. Thank you.
And Commissioner Lazara?
Yes, I do. I have two, actually. One of them is a point of personal privilege, I almost think, because I'm not sure how many of you know, but Commissioner Cruz had a baby about six weeks ago.
Yeah, just about.
And I did check with him before I was going to say anything, and I'm not sure that you've heard that the little baby had to go through a really intense surgery. But the reason I'm saying that is because he came home yesterday and he's, knock on wood, doing really well. But I guess what I'm asking is that everybody keep this little baby in your prayers and the entire family, because he's got a long road ahead of him. And we all stand with you, Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you.
In every, every aspect of whatever happens.
I appreciate that, and I thank my colleagues and everyone else out there that has expressed their heartfelt thank yous and prayers. Baby underwent open-heart surgery that lasted about seven hours. And six days later, we're now home. He made a full recovery. He's doing amazing. Thank God to the doctors at New York Presbyterian. And he's expected to be just a normal baby. So everything's working out great. We still have a long road ahead of us as far as the immediate recovery of the surgery, but all in all, everything is going as planned, so.
And you know we're all with you.
Yeah, thank you.
You know that. We have your back. The second thing I wanted to say is if you look at Resolution Number Eight, the county has been in talks with the state of New Jersey. We are bringing on a veteran service officer. And through the state, along with someone clerical, I guess, type of help with this new VSL officer. The VSL officer is going to be housed here in the county clerk's office and will be working very closely with a lot of the veteran services around here to help out. Right now, you're going to see we're voting on the MOU, oh, MOA. And we're looking forward to welcoming this new veteran service officer into the county to help with, you know, just anything we can do for veterans. As you heard, Director, say, we value our veterans and we have to do everything we can to help them. So this is just another step in the progress that we're making in order to help veterans. So she should be starting, hopefully, by the fall. We're waiting for furniture.
And Director, if I could jump in there and recognize our county clerk, Daniel Ireland Demhoff, who graciously offered space in her office where the veterans ID services are located, so there'd be a nice synergy there for veterans that need their veterans ID, and then they'll have additional services from the state. So thank you to the county clerk. And Commissioner Lazara is being modest. She led an effort to get more resources into Passaic County for veterans from the state, which led Governor Murphy to announce in his budget address that he would be placing veterans officers, state veteran officers in every county, with Passaic County being the first because of her advocacy. She's being modest. This is very much something she has championed and is now making a reality.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Good report there.
Sure. I do love talking about infrastructure, but there's one more thing I wanted to mention, and kudos to Sandy for making, you know, putting Passaic County on the cutting edge there for veterans. We do try and make sure that we're providing the outreach and the contact that folks need. And one piece of that that you all have seen here in this meeting throughout the past year has been our American Sign Language interpreters. That's a state grant-funded project, and that grant is coming to an end later this year. And I just want to remind folks who are watching, if you are benefiting from these ASL interpreters, please send us an email, send me an email, and let me know that, because we want to make sure that we're providing services that people are using. And when that state funding comes to an end, we're going to have a decision to make. If you're able to know what we're saying because of what they're doing, please make sure that we know that.
Public portion, take a motion, open the public, open the floor to the public?
No move.
Motion made by Bartlet, second by Lazara, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Anyone from the public wishing to be heard, please step forward to the podium there. Just to remind you, you have three minutes, and also remind you that anything that you say is a matter of public record. You'll see a little light scenario up there. Green means you keep talking, yellow means your time is coming to an end, and red means to, it's over. Anyone from the public?
Seeing no one, that podium moved to close.
Second.
Bastard in Duffy.
Commissioner Duffy would be proud. He told, he left me in charge of that, by the way.
Motion by Cruz, second by Gallo, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. I'll move it. L1 to L, I jumped? I'm sorry?
I did, I did.
There's no late starters. Thank you. Anybody wants to pull a resolution to be voted on separately? Please let me know. I knew that was in there. So I'll take a motion on L1 to L45. Motion was made by Lazara.
Second.
Second by Cruz. Any discussion? Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Next on the agenda is the personnel who need a motion.
I'll move, I'll move the person.
Second by Lazara.
Second.
Second by Bartlet, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Bills?
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Lazara, second by Gallo, roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director Bartlet.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Before we ask for an adjournment, I just want to wish everyone a happy Fourth of July, happy sixth day, Fourth of July, next long weekend coming, and hopefully we'll have weather to be able to enjoy it all. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
Second by Cruz, second by Lazara, all in favor?
All right.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Done.